On Monday, May sixteenth. To order. Can we have roll call please?
Counselor Schoen. Counselor Mellon. Present. Counselor Tulewski.
Present.
Counselor Colgaris. Is excuse. And Counselor Gardner.
Present. Before we go into our moment of silence, there's a couple of minutes and a half over the past weekend that caused us to reflect on life. And like they keep our thoughts in our prayers with some buffalo and also on the West Coasters. Some passing out there also. The tragedy. And then at this time also, I'd like Counselors Ken Schoen to say a few words about former Councilman Russell Snyder who passed away this past week also.
When Councilman Russell Snyder passed away, May fifth, the town of Munster lost one of its biggest supporters. Russell was born in Ohio, grew up in Illinois, earned a civil engineering degree at South Dakota. Served in the U.S. Air Force during the Korean War. And then luckily for us, spent most of his adult life here in Munster. He retired from U.S. Steel after twenty-nine years of service and then began a new career in commercial real estate. A job he held until his second retirement, just five years ago in the age of eighty-nine. As a local businessman, he joined the Munster Chamber of Commerce, which in nineteen ninety-three named him Munster Citizen here. Russell loved Munster and Northwest Indiana. I believe Russell and Pat designed their home, which they lived in for more than fifty years on Holman Avenue. It was his goal annually to walk every street in this town. I was lucky enough a few years back when I was asked to walk with him. I can tell you it wasn't easy keeping up with Russell Snyder. Russell joined the Lions Club in nineteen fifty-seven and was a member for sixty-five years and had perfect attendance for decades. He eventually became one of the few life members of the club, which was an honor bestowed upon him. In those early days, Munster had no public parks. It was the Lions Club that raised the funds to purchase the property little by little that then became known as Community Park. Russell was part of that movement. Russell later served on the park board. He was elected to the town board in nineteen seventy-two and re-elected that time after that. This isn't in my paper, but if I had won a primary back then, I would have had the honor of losing again. It was about that time that I first knew Russell. I was chairing Munster City Affairs Group, which arranged for foreign exchange deals. Russell was our contact at the town. He attended each of our public events and was also an active member of his church, the Munster Institute Society Theater Center and United Way. While on the town board, he was appointed to the board of the Amman Standard Charity Commission. And I can tell you that last week, its members remembered him well and were sorry to hear of his passing. Besides that, quite many also served as a member of the Lucha Foundation Development Commission, the Northwest Indiana Regional Planning Commission. And about a year ago, he and Pat celebrated his sixty-fifth anniversary. In this year, it's a community service in the end of the governor named Russell was second in the race. Indiana's highest priority. In his last two years, Russell found it difficult to hear and to walk. But that did not stop him from attending to his events. Rest in peace, Russell. He will serve until.
And now if we could all raise our moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Captain. Thanks, boys. At this time, a public comment, you kindly asked that in-person public comment is limited to two minutes maximum per person, five minutes per group spokesman. And then we ask you to keep your comments constructive with public policy issues. Other comments may also be submitted electronically. If you have any questions or comments about items on the agenda that you'd like to have entered into the meeting minutes, please email that question or comments to our town manager, Dustin Anderson, at danderson@munster.org. At this time, is there any public comment?
Mike Dumovic, eighteen thirty-three, two of them. Two things. Number one, because I see you've gotten here about the Peter Park this time. What did they anticipate that becoming a reality?
At this time, it's being outlined for June third.
Okay. Have they impressed? An issue? What happens if they can't reach your license plate? How are they going to handle that?
Mike, I'm happy to answer. You have other questions that you're going to ask.
Yeah, my other one is basically just, can you guys put something in the news you can use next month to tell bicycle riders that they have to obey the rules of the road? I mean, some of them, they don't think stop signs pertain to them. And I know you've had issues with kids getting hit on the bikes because of people doing stupid things. But, you know, it works both ways. I just saw one today with a guy with a tandem bike with his little kid on the back that, you know, moved through two stop signs. I mean, him getting hurt, okay, the little girl not, wouldn't be happy with something like that. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Mike, the June edition has gone across, or yeah, June edition has gone across already. So we'll make a note of it for July, and I believe the police department is doing a bit of a bike education blitz.
This month?
This month?
Yeah. Okay, we anticipated that. That's what I'm about to say.
Because school's getting out and you're going to have, I mean, it's better, you've got stupid adults. Two.
We want to encourage people, adults, to take bicycles and therefore they should know the rules of the road and find a way.
Thank you very much, Ron. Yes.
My name is Jerry Kuyper, two seventeen, Carby. I talked to Councilman Colgaris after, I think it was two council meetings ago regarding the signs that say we support Munster Police Department. And he said it would be all right if I brought some signs here. They are free. It started out a year ago. I started with some that the police might out. We sold them for cost. And we had some donations sold from the MRCC. So it's not political on them. It just says, "We support Munster Police Department." They're free for the day. So if you know someone that wants one, they can come on and view it on the page themselves. Thank you very much.
And any other public comments? Seeing other comments, I'll pose the item on the agenda and we'll move into the consent agenda. President, I will be accepting the consent agenda. One second. There is a motion, a second. Are there any comments with regards to the consent agenda? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon. Yes. Counselor Tulewski.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. And there is no old business. We will move on to new business in NIKD, station betterment and utility relocation. Mr. Anderson.
So as you have followed along, this has been a long, long process of collaboration and conversation with our partners at NIKD. Many, many iterations of the proposed betterments that our partners at CDM Smith brought before us, the feedback that you were able to provide. We have now an agreement, commitment, a written commitment between the town and NIKD that will allow NIKD to authorize the joint venture of Passion and Ragnar Benson to purchase the commodities, the materials, and begin work on this so they can stay on track. So the initial price tag for these improvements at both Main Street and Ridge Road was seven point four million. We have talked them down to six million. This is going to result in a station area, particularly at Main, that is consistent with the design language of the town, something that's going to be here for a very long time that we can be proud of as a community. I'm really proud of the work that Council, CDM Smith and staff did together to work with NIKD on this. I think it's going to be really special. Some just top line features are some additional natural light, brick facades, a nicer platform, nicer furnitures and fixtures, enhanced lighting, a better canopy as you're standing out there. So these things are going to be visually apparent to any resident that takes this train on a daily basis or on an infrequent basis. And I hope it will be a point of pride for many, many years. So that is one written commitment. And there is a second written commitment. There's a water main, a twelve-inch water main relocation that we also would like to include in this. While the water main is far enough away that NIKD doesn't have to pay for it, we have seen this water main break two to three times in the last eighteen months. And we are concerned that with the driving of pilings, the construction, and once that's there, it's going to become even harder to access. If we were just to move it now in advance of the construction, it would be safe and with peace of mind for a very long time. So we have a water main that needs replaced. We have an opportunity to do it now, and we'd like you to consider allowing us to do that work. And that is a price of three hundred and ninety-seven, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Counselor, there's two recommendations you want to say off the front of us. I think we usually make each one by themselves, so. I will to approve the first, we can win an agreement between the town, Munster, and the city of transportation this year for a price not to exceed six million, seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. There is a motion, a second. Any comments? Questions?
Just to reiterate some of the things that Mr. Anderson said, working with CDM, I think it was Regal, saving up the money to have tip funds for the significant investment. I think it was, it was really service to the community. And for the next item that's going to cost four hundred thousand, I know that negotiations with the joint venture have reduced the price of this item by one point four million. But thank you to that.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon. Yes. Counselor Tulewski.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. And now there's the second written commitment. I will also go ahead and make a motion to approve the second written commitment between the town of Munster and the city of transportation this year for a price not to exceed three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Very good. There's a motion. Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. Any comments? Is an eighth-inch water main, is that an average-sized water main or?
It is a twelve-inch main, and that is one of our larger mains in town.
Very good.
Most of them are eight. I'm sorry.
Who does it serve?
It provides a link. It doesn't really serve anyone, but it provides a loop from Fisher Street to Forty-Fifth. So loops are very important in our water system that we don't have dead ends. We don't have stagnant water. It helps water pressure. So it's a, it's a pretty important main. It's, it's serving the south side of town.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Nothing consistent with all the other investments that we're making in our fund or later, they're, you know, are, it's structured really important that we do things right. So this is one where I understand the right, you could let it squeak behind, but it's not going to be the right choice. Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon. Yes. Counselor Tulewski.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Bringing up to item number, or item letter B, to the two thousand twenty-three budget calendar, for treasure miss, is there anything to add to this?
I would only like to highlight that September nineteenth and October third are the council meetings that we would like to encourage all the councilors to be available for and attend. And if you know that you are unable to attend in advance, let us know. We got a little bit of real one, but that allows us. They are September nineteenth and October third. Thank you.
Very good. Are, you listed you make a motion to approve this budget or is it?
It's just a, it's to put it on your calendar.
I would also ask council if there's any comments, again, this is mainly from a budget standpoint, from a revenue side, things that are state-controlled and of that nature. If there's anything that we want to look at from a work-study standpoint or anything from a operational standpoint, please let me know so we can coordinate a work study with the council staff. So once we get to September, there's pretty much nothing else that we can do. So we would have to schedule a work study before that time. And again, we're really not going to be talking much about the revenue side of things because that's all state-controlled. There are some, you know, some revenues that are globally controlled, but more or less from an operational standpoint, things like that. So I would only say that use that September nineteenth that we need to use it and a work study before that. Okay, very good. Moving on to the WC, ordinance sixteen, eighteen sixty-three, which is the amendments of the ARPA funds. For treasure miss.
This is, as most of us are all aware, we received, will receive approximately five million dollars as part of the American Rescue Plan Recovery Plan. We wrote in a one point one million dollars to the purchase of an entire truck in northern Heavenland to replace the revenue from the Parks Department for a period of time that they were unable to generate their revenue and their expenses continue to occur. So this is to make an official plan for two point five million dollars of ARPA bonds for capital improvements to the water regional infrastructure. We use that two point five in countering rate increases and this help bring the rate down. So we do, are required to formalize it. This is the next step is to formalize it via ordinance. And then just for, for information, we have just under a million dollars left to spend. So, and we have time to determine what we'd like to use that at. So we're respectfully asking for a motion and a roll call vote to hear on first reading and celebrate in our next council meeting.
Mr. President, I move to hear ordinance eighteen sixty-three on first reading. Let's get a second for the next. Okay, there's a motion, a second. Any comments? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon. Yes. Counselor Tulewski.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. And we move on to ordinance eighteen sixty-four, which is amending the stormwater rates.
All right, I'm going to pronounce this incorrectly, but there was a sprat, what is it, a sprat, there's a error. There's a V in there. A sprat, there's an error. And once we passed the ordinance originally, we adopted it in March. Once we went to put it into practical application, it was discovered that some of the language was different. And the intent was always to go via Astro, and so we worked with the agents that did. And we are asking to correct this in because of timing. And this would have gone into effect in June. We consulted with our attorney and we are respectfully asking that we adopt this ordinance on first reading with the updated language and then waive the rules and then a second motion to adopt the ordinance.
The council will see before them two, or about two motions to be made for this action. Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules and we have the readings about ordinance eighteen sixty-four on first reading.
I'll say the motion.
The motion, second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon. Yes. Counselor Tulewski.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Mr. President, I would also approve and move to adopt ordinance eighteen sixty-four on first reading. There's a motion.
Second motion.
And second. Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon. Yes. Counselor Tulewski.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Ordinance eighteen sixty-five is next on the agenda. That is the creation of the parking meter fund.
I can do this one again. The park board entered into agreement to, for managed parking that's intended for. The Indiana Code requires that all these collected from parking meters are deposited from the current treasurer and they're deposited into a separate fund. This is setting up this fund. Ordinance eighteen sixty-five is directed to create a fund and a court fund in accordance with the statute while restricting the use to those listed under Indiana Code thirty-nine, nine, twelve, four, B.
Very good. Is there any motion from the council?
Mr. Chairman, I am in your ordinance eighteen sixty-five on first reading. Let's get a second or even the next reading.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Any comments?
Well, I had maybe a couple of questions on this one. The restricting the use to only the seven number, you know, twelve, four, B ten, is that is that the piece that says it's not used for parks?
Yes. We also have a comment to the attorney's office and we need a little bit of clarification. So there may be some tweaking in the ordinance between now and the second reading, but with timing, we felt it was important to get it up in the form of a statement.
This one would then be used exclusively for our parking related revenue?
Yes. Yes.
If that will, parks that I was wondering in future dates, are there plans for this? But in future dates, parking, public shooting areas to attract flow, true thicknesses, like, I mean, would it go to the same fund and then would it make sense to have?
There are, there are ten, correct, ten designated uses for the parking meter fund. And as this is specifically in Centennial Park, this revenue will be designated for parks. If we expand parking throughout the town, we may need a second ordinance or updated ordinance to expand the scope of expenditures.
Specifically for tax, that, or only for the parks.
Exactly. And it's state.
And specifically that part?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Very good. Any other comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon. Yes. Counselor Tulewski.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving on to ordinance eighteen sixty-six. This is the amending ordinance eighteen twenty-one, which is the fifty-fifty sidewalk replacement program. You essentially probably also say welcome to the staff. Deputy Manager Jill T. D.
Tomasso. Yes.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so last year, council adopted an ordinance establishing the fifty-fifty sidewalk program, which requires, or requires homeowners to pay for fifty percent of sidewalk repairs. We implemented the program last year and then had a meeting to discuss, you know, improvements that we could make and how, things that went well. One of the things that came out of that was a recommendation that we place a cap on the financial burden that would be placed on any individual homeowner. So taking a look at that, we decided the best way to do that would be to do it as a percentage rather than a, a dollar amount because the percentage will take into account changes in commodity prices and contractor costs as that changes year by year. So in the memo, there is a table with a lot of numbers in it and sorry about that. Um, so I looked at varying lot widths. That's the first column. So those are typical lot widths that we would see throughout town. And then corner lots obviously have more sidewalk on them and they range between two hundred and two hundred and fifty feet. So the first column is the total cost that it would be under today's contract prices to replace the entire sidewalk, all sixty feet of a sixty-foot lot. The uncapped column is the fifty percent of that that a homeowner would be responsible for under the existing ordinance. So then I looked at seventy, capping that at seventy-five percent of the length, at seventy percent of the length and at fifty percent of the length. So there, that's where those numbers are. The blue highlights are what we recommend that council approve tonight or approve in the ordinance. A seventy-five percent cap for an interior lot and a fifty percent cap on a corner lot. And you can see the, you know, the cost savings that a, that a homeowner would see as a result of that. The other thing I want to point out is that typically we don't see sidewalk repair lengths being greater than thirty feet under normal circumstances. Every once in a while, we have a really, really long one. So the cap will help prevent a homeowner from getting a really, really large bill, but for the most part, the town is not subsidizing the program any further than the fifty-fifty program already does subsidize.
Very good. Thank you. Wishes of the council.
See, one question, procedural question. In this motion, you suggest to, or I think it was just first reading, you suggest to make a recommendation for which counts?
I wrote the ordinance, the ordinance has been amended to recommend, to have the seventy-five percent cap and the fifty percent cap. So if it's, yes, but it's up for you guys to decide and discuss tonight.
Okay, so if I move into the ordinance after that.
Yes.
Okay, I will move to the ordinance eighteen sixty-six on first reading and second.
There's a motion, a second. Comments?
I just, I had a question.
Sure.
Thank you for breaking it down, the numbers for percentages. You said that they're usually not, not usually are doing the full sixteen or full seventy-five, which makes sense on the entire sidewalk side a little bit. Are we, were we finding issues with residents that being willing to do the full of that? Is that the reason for the cap or just, just because?
I think it was more for, we didn't have any issues last year with people. It was, but we all, we didn't have as much participation either because, you know, it was a little shocking when we went from one hundred percent to fifty-fifty. So.
That's what I figured. I just, just something different. Just maybe more encouraging to have it be a little bit more zone. So to get more people interested in what they're.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but prior to last year's ordinance, though, again, residents were responsible for one hundred percent of their sidewalk replacement, correct?
Yes.
Prior to this, ordinance going back a year ago.
So, yes, the answer is yes. And so it's just like old improv, right? Like, yes, and. So, yes, they are still one hundred percent responsible. And the town had some money to tackle the absolute worst of the worst sidewalks in town. And when you look at that amount of money, it was insufficient to even tackle the worst of the worst. So as in an attempt to better the community and create a safer environment for all the people who, who walk, you know, the old folks walking their dogs at five o'clock in the morning that I see on the way to the gym to the kids going to school on the way home, right? We can do more work and, and make more places safer and improve the property values for more homeowners if we partner with them fifty-fifty, right? So we took it, well, it's technically one hundred percent Dustin Anderson's Truck Gardeners, right? Whatever. Now, if we get on that pavement condition and analysis, we can get not only the worst of the worst, but we can get a few of the just plain old bats, right? So we're expanding the universe of work that we can accomplish in service to the community. And looking at some of those, that some of those could be kind of large and there are folks in town who are on fixed incomes or different circumstances. And the last thing we want to do is, you know, run someone over in our rush to do something good. So that's where this cap came in. We had the number of instances where we had to set up payment plans to accommodate people could be on one hand last year. But I would like to keep it there, right? Ideally. So this is, this is a, this is a preventative step to address something that we perceive that might be an issue rather than a course correction on something that has been an issue.
Any comments? Yes.
Yes, it's because of the number that most commonly it's from one to thirty. Those sidewalks are from five.
One square. Yep.
So there's not very common that it would fall into only a sixty feet. It looks like where the cap begins. So there's not very common that it would fall into only a sixty feet, it looks like is where the cap begins.
So it would be based on the lot width, so a standard sixty foot lot, you would pay forty, if you had, if the whole thing had to be done, or you would only pay for forty five feet, fifty percent of forty five feet. So if we did, if we had to repair fifty feet, the town would pay a hundred percent of that five foot. I know, it's a lot of percentages.
So if I have one to six squares, about a square, that would be five, three.
Right.
Then the cap don't come in.
Right, yes. Right, so most repairs would not be subject to the cap. Right, and this is based on our, my observation from last year, it's not anything scientific, it's just that I looked on the list and I'm like, yeah, most of these are not large, so.
So when it gets more than six concrete squares in your sidewalk that needs to be replaced, then we start to help with it. This, this change will help the residents. By saving that money, they will not have to pay for fifty percent of the whole thing, but
Right.
And just like Mr. Anderson said, this will also help us in those cases get to more residents.
Correct.
Because you're more on the good spread. And my other question was more with sidewalks and generalities, what do we do with all the funds that will go out at the end of the year?
So that, that's a really good question, and that's, you know, of, of, both a, mostly a policy choice, right? So the way we ran it last year, it was one hundred percent voluntary, because we had a large backlog of people saying, hey, we'd love this to do this and we didn't have a mechanism to do it, so council chose to create that mechanism, we had all those people participate and they were very happy. But we had money left over, so now that rolls over and now we have a larger opportunity. So it's a question of, well, we become prescriptive with this because the intention I, I perceive is that we've budgeted this money to improve sidewalks, we've created a program to facilitate this. We have a mechanism to say, you have to do this, so we should probably go ahead and do that, right? Because this is one of, a number of pressure release valves if this sneaks up on you, right? So one is you can just say, I want to do it next year, okay, fine. Right, the ordinance says, wait, if I went to Mr. Schoen and said, I've got bad news, Dr. Schoen, your sidewalk's in real rough shape. We're going to bill you this, but good news is, we're going to pay half of it. And you say, Dustin, I just don't want to do that. I said, okay, well, you can have a year break and kind of acclimate to the idea, right? So you don't have to do it this year, but we'll, we'll come back next year. And then, and then an additional firewall is, for safety of the residents finances, is say we come back fourteen months from now and say, Dr. Schoen, it's, it's time, someone's going to really break an ankle here. And say, okay, fine, I don't like it, but fine, we can put you on a payment plan. So you take those small bites, so it doesn't have to be all at once. And then the final safety measure for resident finances is, if it's a very large one, not only can we do a payment plan after a year, wait, so kind of like wrap your head around that, we also have the, the, the cap on public participation. So that's a very long-winded way of saying, we are experiencing that right now, we have rolled over because there was a little bit of reluctance to go hard when we didn't have this last piece of kind of safety measure, release valve. So what I anticipate this year is we're going to be prescriptive in those repairs and we'll see where we go. And to the, the short answer to your very reasonable short question was, it rolls over and we do more work.
So we don't lose money?
No.
We started having too much money at sidewalk. Policy question and justice.
I don't think we'll ever run out of sidewalks to be repaired.
There is a motion and a second on the table to hear for this ordinance, roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon, yes, Counselor Schuylitzky.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving on to I O G, the ordinance eighteen sixty seven versus amended water rates.
Yes, well, we were spending once and once and once working with a consultant, New Gen. Our general assembly was also working very hard and they repealed the utility receipt tax. And we, as a town, had never, we've always charged it and we've always paid it. And amounts to paying approximately fifty thousand dollars each year. It was baked into the water rate. So when they repealed it, after we passed our water rate, went back to New Gen and New Gen was able to pull out the rate that applied to utility tax. So what we're looking for here, again, because of the timing, we're going to ask for a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings and adopt on the first reading as this ordinance eighteen sixty seven, which reduces the water rate by, in some cases, of nickel, thirty-two cents a pedal with one inch meter. So we're asking to do a pretty slightly lower raise. And we will, we are required by law to note by the residents. And so we'll be doing that with a memo at the bottom of each invoice, water bill invoice, as well as a pullout in the New Gen.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to suspend the rules and waive the ratings to adopt ordinance eighteen sixty seven as presented on first reading tonight.
I'll second, motion is second, roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon, yes, Counselor Schuylitzky.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to, to adopt ordinance eighteen sixty seven of first reading.
Very good, there's a motion, second, council. There is a motion and a second, roll call please.
Counselor Schoen, Counselor Mellon, yes, Counselor Schuylitzky.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
One more to the head, Counselor Mellon, thank the motion, Counselor Schuylitzky seconded, thank you.
Hey, moving on to letter H, ordinance eighteen sixty eight, the amendment to the police now regarding the.
And this is my last one, it's been a busy meeting perhaps, you know, the board members on this. Ordinance eighteen sixty nine, sixty eight, sorry, sixty eight, my glasses too. My, before I was here, there's for a long time, there's been a federal asset forfeiture fund for the monster police department. Last year, we created a state asset forfeiture fund as well as a police department's special revenue fund. As we defined those two funds, in no place did we define any revenue from any local orbiters. So this is an ordinance that will allow us to, any money seized globally will go into the police department's special revenue fund, which also tracks fingerprint funds, tongue releases and other record service fees.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion here, ordinance eighteen sixty eight on first reading and says seven, eight percent rating.
I'll second, there's a motion, a second, any comments?
One question, this, this says which funds the money will go to, does it say anything about how they're to be?
Perhaps to, of how they're going to be used?
Yeah.
There, that fund, if I remember correctly, is defined as things specific to the police department, I think.
Okay, so if we're going with these we get from fingerprints, fingerprint release and record service.
Yes, they'll go in that revenue fund and then it'll be first heard as opposed to going, coming in and out of the general fund, which could go anywhere.
Okay, other questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon, yes, Counselor Schuylitzky.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving on to letter I, aquatic control proposal, this is the fountain letter removal routine name and storage installation for twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three.
So we're way ahead of schedule on this, we like to do it while we're working on the installation of the curtain. Kind of top of mind. So this will set us up to have aquatic controls, remove all the fountains, maintain those fountains for any routine maintenance, like if a motor dies or something like that. But, and then replace them in the spring of twenty three, so. That's just routine workaday stuff to keep the town moving in the right direction and we would like your approval to continue to do that.
I move to approve the attachment, also stated for twenty twenty two, quotation number three two five eight zero zero for twenty twenty two slash twenty three, winter removal maintenance and twenty three spring installation, the amount of seven thousand three hundred sixty dollars. And quotation number three two five six, three two five seven nine six for twenty twenty two dash, twenty three, winter removal maintenance and storage and twenty twenty three spring installation, anyhow, two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Very good, thank you. I'll second that. Any, any comments or questions?
One reading for two.
Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon, yes, Counselor Schuylitzky.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Okay, I'm moving along to letter J, motivating water main improvement projects, this is last year's project. Over Hoover Crestwood Elliott Timber, aiming, changing order number one, number two.
Yes, this project was completed back in September and I apologize for the delay in finalizing it, we had some issues with our contractor. There are two change orders before you, the first is related to additional water main work. We had, the town requested that the contractor put in about forty additional feet of water main across our newly paved Crestwood Avenue to tie into a, a main on Azalea before the new pavement got placed, just as a preventative measure that main on Azalea has been problematic in the past and we wanted new, new water main under our new pavement. The other portion of that change order is for some exploratory digging that had to be done at the intersection of Fisher Manor and Timrick, where we made the connection of the new Timrick water main to the water main on Manor Avenue. That was necessary because the town's water atlas was not accurate, an accurate depiction of what was in the ground there. And so the plans were not correct and we needed to, the contractor spent more, more than a day digging around and trying to figure out the best way to make that connection. So they're asking for time and materials spent to do that exploratory digging. So that's change order number one, change order number two is just a final quantities balancing change order that we see at the end of every construction project because our bids are based on estimated quantities. This one is large by paving contract standards because you may remember that we, when we took the pavement off of Timrick, we hit some pretty bad, bad soils. And we had to dig an additional six inches of soil out and replace that with stone. So the majority of the, of the cost of that change order is in that stone and that excavation cost.
Is the additional excavation that was needed and then additional stone?
Correct, yes. Yeah, and they were both unit quantities in the contract, so we have a price, we're just adjusting the quantities, the final quantities for that.
Yes, wishes of the council?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve change order one in the amount of twenty nine thousand one hundred thirty eight dollars and sixteen cents and change order two in the amount of one hundred eighty eight thousand two hundred ninety five dollars and sixty four cents resulting in a net total change to contract price of two hundred seventeen thousand four hundred thirty three dollars and eighty cents. And making the total contract cost one million eight hundred ninety five thousand five hundred fifty seven dollars and fifty five cents. And the total due up to eight thousand five hundred will be paid from the lot. I think that covers everything.
Good, there's a motion, a second. Pretty good motion there. Wow, wow, other comments or questions?
I just have a question, does it work at Timmering Manor and Fisher? Is similar to where the road were moved? You've gotten the approval for the canar development, will there be any impact to the homeowners?
I don't, yeah, probably not.
Normally building would be done in there.
No.
And this was more expensive than we would have imagined because of what we found there. Just curious what we have to do.
Well, for, to cover this, there's going to be less work that could be done elsewhere, right? So we have in our real exercise, funds, a lot of rooms, maybe. Then there, we can huddle together this without a lot of harbor, but for, you know, every dollar, a cent. Unfortunately, this is a legitimate change order. What we've done in the future to avoid these is we've gotten a little bit more diligent, kind of exceeding what I would think is best practice for soil worries, because we don't want to have this happen again, right? I think, just from administrative perspective, it's probably wider spend a few thousand dollars more on the front end. I think it surprises with tens of hundreds of thousands of them back.
It was quite a job.
Quite disruptive, it was a very generous understatement. It was, it was a nightmare for the rest of the summer there and I do regret how that happened.
Additional work and a lot more additional time, but that rule was chartered, so we used some of the best of the. Very good, any other comments, questions? There's a little call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon, yes, Counselor Schuylitzky.
Yes. And then we will move on to letter K, motley warming improvement projects, this is the application for payment, which is released by an age and joining the.
Uh, just that typically we would wait, so the change order goes through, the contractor can submit their final payout based on the new quantities, which they've already prepared. And then we do a final release of retainage as its own pay application because that's best financial practices. And we would typically wait a meeting to do that, but we are under a deadline for endot to get this wrapped up at the end of the month. So that's why we're asking for council approval, approval tonight.
Very good, is your side? Motion, a second, any comments? Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen, Counselor Mellon.
Very good, that refers to the act on generous call reports, are there any reports, any portfolio reports from the council?
So, at the B C A, I mentioned meetings past Tuesday, last week, we had one of the members, Stuart Stewart, he served. one of the members, Stuart Stewart, he served twenty-five years of BCA in management mission, and he retired. It's a nice city, it's been a long time, with his family, his friends, and I just wanted to say anyone who ever has sort of been in the minutes or even attended a meeting or anything where Stewart was present for sidewalks, you know, sort of very relative to tonight's meeting, he was a huge advocate for sidewalks. And he was not one to be, to be compared, is not have sidewalks, senior sidewalks, or any any such thing. And I would just publicly like to thank Stewart, and here, thinking of all of the services to the town, for years, it's been a long time to be dedicated to waters and show up and to discuss what sometimes can be very long and relative to this meeting, so I would wish Stewart the best and happiness of his time.
That is awesome. Any reports?
Yeah, I guess I'm also many that I've been before. Just that I had at the last end of the meeting was from a very rural town. And people heard something about the economy, blah, 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 and just a climate advance, I mentioned it, the potential road reintegration and everything that that is narrated before, and twenty seconds, the whole, the dynamic assessment to the ordinance of passing. We have any developers want to come and building over houses, and and then smart, also, um, interesting, things that are happening. That I'm trying to, I'm trying to mention, that we do, uh, see them here.
Any other reports and announcements?
I'd like to announce the like I said, waste management for, we'll have this first meeting this Thursday, this new facility, which is in Monroeville, Monroe. There's a lot of them being into close to the county, the mall and, although I think everybody's getting this mall handled. And for the first time, I'll be able to look at board members in the face, because we're twenty-seven board members. We've been sitting across the project of the sage, Crown Point, for us, facing the the audience, which consists of the executive director. And if we go see anybody, if you don't see anybody else that are beside you, and do this in that, I got to tell people we'll be beginning, sitting around tables, something like that.
You were.
So I need to have an announcement, and this is about the National Strategic Foundation's public archives that everyone has served out for talking about this for a year now, to go to the town. So by this to us, they were all submitted, and everyone was, when we were all down, starting, we started going out, I see Mr. Paul in here, he'll be helping, he's developing so much, so I don't know if I've been exactly in time, it's just like, I need a little more public works to cover, by morally, we'll see thirty-four to us without town. There will be, um, listening sponsors, artists, there'll be, there are, where we own, uh, even more, uh, artists, et cetera, sponsors. It's going to be a beautiful vision, and I'm also one of the lately, so I'm excited about this kind of happening, and I'm very determined to go out follow the map and take some solvays and send them to us.
Very good, any any minute for your, it's going to be shut up in the next two, three weeks. You're good, no other announcements? There are two meetings coming up in June, the first and third, Monday, August sixth, and June twenty, we have a council, we have a mission meetings. We're to tell the businesses, the council, or motion and a second, all favor. This meeting is closed, and then we'll go right to our next meeting, which is the redevelopment mission meeting. For Monday, it's May sixteen, I will call it, you need to vote. Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen, Commissioner Mellon, Commissioner Tulewitzki, Commissioner Coltrane, this is Tuesday, and Commissioner Gardner.
This is present.
To the school, we're this evening.
Very good, we will go to the public cabinet, this is where we're going to hear publicly about the resupplies to the redevelopment commission. Seeing no one recording, we'll go to the public cabinet, manager, president, janitor, for us, commissioner, the council. There's a motion, second, roll call please. Yes. Okay, and then we want to, you know, this is, you're sort of, as a five, first, the resolution, six, and then we can, for us.
In the coordinating, we passed a resolution requiring a process of a little just over twenty thousand dollars to make that proceed to get a circle cost, when we, as a combined of the of the fund, that was total, the actual, the sum is total, there's an additional, and then four, one thousand six hundred just sixteen thousand and ninety-eight cents that we are requesting, those additional costs are put into municipal instead of service payment, and then those additional costs are a result of interest earnings, premium, and some of the issues of the past.
So there's a motion for a recommended, recommended action for the council. Just to prevent from, to adopt, propose a motion, you know, I'll say.
I'll second that.
There's a motion, second, roll call please.
Commissioner Schoen.
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon, yes. Commissioner Tulewitzki. And Commissioner Gardner.
Yes. Any reports and announcements from the redevelopment commission? Seeing none, there's a motion, we're here. There's a motion and a second, all favor. Meeting adjourned.